Hey. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to East Dundee's special meeting, day Monday, January 24th, 2022. I've got six oh one. Catherine, do you think so?
Trusty Mahoney, here. Trusty Quincy.
Present.
Trusty Burton, here. Trusty Saviano, here. Trusty Triver.
Here.
And Trusty Sager, last time. President Mahoney.
Here. Okay, if you all rise between.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, well, thanks to our full comment on agenda items only. Is anybody in the audience want to address the board on agenda items? Seeing none, okay, we'll go, don't have consent agenda tonight, so just get right into the meat of it. Uh, we'll go, I am ready, if I could have a motion.
This discussion.
Oh, right.
Discussion about the Illinois water and sewer assistance charge.
Right, okay, you probably all read through this, but Erica, if you wanna give us a little background.
Sure, so state law passed this, uh, state law. Played last year, mid last year, it allows municipalities to implement this charge that would then create assistance fund for residents who had hardships in the water and sewer bills. Similar programs already in existence will come at a night where this one is the first one that was specific to the water and sewer utility bill. So, just interested to hear feedback from the board to see if there's a desire to go forward with this, or if it's something that we want to continue to think about and bring back some later date.
We've had a utility meeting, right, to kind of discuss some of the water shut-off questions, right? Scott, or is it?
Well, I was not, I'm not on the utilities.
Not the utilities.
Well, if it was you.
Oh, it didn't drink.
Candy.
And really the focus on that was more about the fees or fines for late payment, like late payment fees. Is really what the scope of that meeting was about, and right now, I believe. I'm bringing this in here, but we have, we have a policy about imposing fees, but we're looking at whether or not they, we looked at whether or not they made sense. I know, and this was brought up by Trusty Quincy. And expressing concern over that if it actually makes sense to have fines because we are the ones that are, it's not a task, we're, we're producing the, um, the, the service internally. So, um, I think that this is, it's two different things, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if they were related, that we covered both conversations.
But I think it's a good, to your, to your point too, it's a good topic for maybe a committee of the whole type of meeting to kind of come to consensus on that. I don't think I ever got a final notes from Andrew, so I'm gonna help with that meeting.
Well, if you, if you look through, if you read through the packet, it indicated a situation specific to us, what our numbers are with, you know, people in arrears and so forth. The, you know, it doesn't seem like a whole lot of money, you know, I mean, it's 10 cents per, per household or whatever. But I wasn't able to really get a clear understanding on how would the municipality have to intervene on the, on the homeowner's behalf in order to get money out of this account or this program? Or, um, and there again, and too, it was, we're talking state government, so, you know, just getting the money from them to begin with might be a bit of a challenge. That would be kind. So, those are the things that I, you know, question. Maybe you and I talk about the non-residential charge that we would not be able to, that would end up being imposed that, you know, businesses and then anybody who is, I would assume, if we talk about it, anybody who's getting water service from the village but is not in the village, I mean, that will definitely be.
Yeah.
So, in other words, the.
Five dollars.
Yeah, uh, the only one thing I can think of, uh, it would be, um, the bill payment, of course, that's a business, uh, and then the rich subdivision, they're not in our town technically, they're unincorporated, we ain't counting, but we do provide their water, so.
We also do water waste management for western.
Yep.
So this would now apply to situations where these are not confined within the village limits. So we can only assess this charge to commercial, commercial properties or residential properties within our village limits, and then thereby the assistance can be provided to people who are residing in the village.
And is it people often, because it says that we're responsible for collecting or making funds and marketing the program.
So we would, if, if we move forward with this, we would collect this from everybody. People would not have a choice, everybody would be subject to it. But then if people needed to access the assistance, they would access it directly through the state.
So then what are they marketing?
We're marketing the fact that the program exists, so they can take advantage of it.
So, I was, I was, you've given us some data on the, there's 175 residents on, is that residential council, not the high, um, with the average outstanding bill of 450, close to 450 dollars. So, that's like 13% of our residents that are in, I guess, because this is focused on low-income support and helping, the act is that low-income people can apply for and get the assistance, you know, there's no way to know, but are, are these just, are the people that are in arrears on their bills really low-income, or are they just deadies, you know, that are perfectly, for what, you know, that, you know, just don't pay the bills? Which we can't necessarily answer.
Or in some cases, they're ignoring it, because I do know that there are some instances with some of the questions concerning water quality down in around the flats. I've been made aware that some people are holding off on paying their bill at all because of poor quality that's coming in, and they're not able to use the water. So, Phil, we'll have to look at that one real quick, and hopefully, well, five coming back online will aid in, in the improvement of that, but, you know, in any event, it does, we need to talk about that loop and see about that, otherwise, there's, we have to use some of that, et cetera.
I think that it would be a good idea to talk about this with the grand's here. I also, you know, if, if, if there's an idea of having a committee in the whole meeting, that's a great idea, I think. The thing I thought is, if we wanna do this, is there a reason why we have to go through the state in the long?
Exactly, no.
Well, we just administer this ourselves, and the other thing I didn't really like about it is 20 cents a month for residents, fine, hardly anything, 10 dollars for businesses is a lot. And I feel like, you know, thinking of this from a state, you know, viewpoint, barely getting corporations, well, we don't have a lot of corporations in East Dundee, we have a lot of family businesses and things like that, that, you know, 10 dollars attracts them more than it does Michael or whoever, you know. So I think it'd be worth talking about doing it here by ourselves.
Yeah.
And maybe not, because I don't think if we go through the state, we can say, well, we're only gonna give half of what the businesses said, right? We have to give the full amount.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it'd be worth at least talking about doing it here, and maybe, uh, if, if, if there is a next step, maybe it's figuring out, you know, what that would cost us to administer that, that program. So you would be using the statute or, or, you just maybe set aside some of your, yeah.
Exactly.
And at that point, we can also talk about the, the fees, like payment fees.
Exactly.
That are, and kind of do like a one big.
Yeah.
We could have a water utility committee for all.
So it's great.
Actually, too, if you think about it, with businesses being the non-residential, they're getting tapped for an extra 10 dollars. I would, I would be interested to know how many of our businesses are actually in arrears on their water bills, chances are, there aren't too many, so in other words, that's just essentially a tax on the businesses, and they're going to be, of course, subsidizing, those who either aren't able to pay or aren't willing, one or two, so, yeah, we can, we can, I think this is a good one for committee of the whole, if we want to set aside the second week of February to discuss that. Phil, do we know when five will be back online?
Nothing confirmed to this point, but the hope is late February.
Late, okay.
Possibly early March, maybe the reconditioned of the column pipe, and that, that may take some time as well, and of course, wait for delivering the pump and the mower and, but
Right.
That should be, those should be in place by the end of January, early February, so. The hope is by the end of February, it depends on questions.
All right, so none of others, so. So, yeah, we, if consensus is to, you know, bring this one before committee of the whole, we haven't had a committee of the whole meeting in quite a while, so the.
Yeah, maybe it's not a whole, maybe it's grand's, Phil, but.
Well, also, yeah, we'd have to, yeah, figure out, you know, how much extra work is gonna be required to administer something, if we're gonna manage our own, but other than that, yeah, I like the idea. Because I think going through the state and then making the resident go through the state, that's gonna be a relative nightmare for most, for anybody who has to deal with that, so. Figure out a way to ease that, and it'd be a good idea.
It is a lot of trouble.
Right, right.
I think we could probably have something ready for March committee of the whole.
March, yeah.
Probably have a couple.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, you know.
Okay.
Too aggressive.
Yeah, because it doesn't really state here, and it might be in a different place from, you know, how they qualify as what they tell, or what the thresholds are, does it, like, qualify, or what you have to do in the high bar, but whatever.
The other thing to keep in mind is that.
It would probably be tied to like CBBG and all these programs that we have.
Dundee's township really has a program, right, that they have actually a fund for set up for people that are behind on their water bills, or expenses. The last time I talked to Erin about it, she said that the fee was, or the, uh, the fund was, you know, basically closed it, and, and there were still, you know, minds and minds, and minds wanted to get, uh, get help, but, um, it is that, it does exist, and so we're not, we're not, as well.
Maybe we can tap into her and see how many, how many individual requests are from East Dundee, you know, to get an idea of what we're looking at, and if she's got any sort of, you know, basis, if you will, of requests or not, so, I mean. All right, does anybody else have any questions, or concerns? No, all right, I'll take a stop, item D then, if I could have a motion.
I will move to approve in order to amend the village, East Dundee Village Code regarding video gaming terminal fees.
One second.
Discussion.
Is this, is this basically, I mean, more or less just how scheme thing, like, we have to do this to maintain state law or follow state law, and, all right, does this change how much money we actually take in from the gaming machines or not?
So it doesn't take in how much we collect from them, either as a terminal fee or a licensing fee, or you have a percentage of what we get from using the machine, it only affects the split of who pays that fee, so whether the gaming operator or the establishment pays that.
So right now, it's the, it's the establishment, right, that pays for the game? So right now, it is.
The sketch.
The operator of the gaming equipment pays the fee, and now we're splitting it between personnel, it's the business that houses the machines, man.
Oh.
And sold, Princeton stuff.
Oh.
What is it, the, I can't remember the name of the company, something Amusement, um, that handles both, well, it's, right, his, his company right now.
They have another.
They, I believe that's, and they, they pick it all up, state law, machines, now to split that, claims an borrower or restaurant, whoever's housing those machines.
So now borrowers have been on, have it in there, they're gonna have to pay part of the fee, but they weren't paying before, it's all just gravy.
Exactly, and that's 50/50.
Is that a one-time call, or is that very?
It's an annual fee, who do you get the payments from?
Borrower pays it, and then maybe would take, cast for a receipt come off, because the company, the game company reimbursing 50%. But newer is, I don't know, it's all, you should go back and look at, through the fees.
You're, Catherine, you're saying that that's how it's handled now?
That's how.
Where the establishment pays it all, and then we, uh, it's reimbursed by the company who leases the machines, but only to 50%, so this, I guess, really affects.
It's really just that, that's not the way it's been in other communities, and then.
That could be a deal, like, a deal made with private.
I'm sure that this company has a lot of these, they can order at the state level.
Yeah. So it actually may not affect establishments in East Dundee all that much, because it's been that way since they've gained.
So it's just state law.
State law, Catherine.
Right. Okay. So, what other questions, anybody?
But it would, it would count, can't us get payment, because you'd have to get payment from two separate people away at the state. Right now, you're getting payment from one, and they're, and they're on the back end figuring out 50%. Right now, for something like this, you'd have to get payment from both the gaming operator and anything.
If we wanted to, but past administration wasn't allowing that to be the case, so that we didn't have to collect from two different parties.
Right.
It gets done, so we could just stay with the operation, if they say that then every amount.
If we, oh, it depends on the state law, so that's, right, what's required by state law. I mean, we, like, it sounds like we have to do this, right, with this new state law, there's, there's no, there's no discussing whether or not we approve this.
There's, well, again, what we're talking about in the essence is how, who pays the initial, and then who gets reimbursed, but the state, the state laws just indicate that they're gonna share that cost equally.
No, the 250 dollar per machine or license per year fee, shall be paid 50% by the general operator, 20% by the license establishment.
Right.
So we just need to make sure, like, with, within that law, if there's a new way that we have to block.
Block, yeah.
Right?
We'll figure that out, yes.
That's administrative, right, let's, we spoke to a gaming business, and they said we don't have to do it, but we can just do a limited.
I think what this does is, there were some behind-the-scenes things about, hey, is it your industry?
Yes, it's our.
And the legislature doesn't, didn't like that, it was supposed to have a certain way that it's trying to make sure it's derived, so that there's a lot of the, a lot of the requirements had to do with the gaming operators that set this up, aren't reaping too much
Right.
profit or providing, kind of, bribes, like, the requirements, for instance, how the, the operators can have to do the, take the improvements to the.
Right.
To the operation of the business and so forth, so it's, it's kind of like a ethics.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so, this is largely kind of a state imposed, or, or how.
Guessing your prevailing way.
Right, right, kind of, we know the rest of things, so.
Call in a question.
Yeah, was there any other discussion?
Call right.
Okay, great. Catherine, please.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Quincy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triver?
Yes.
Okay, then if we could have an item, or, I'm sorry, a motion for items.
Uh, make a motion to approve our rights and I did chapter 116 under Village, based on the Village Code, to add a new class A2 liquor license to allow for the sale of beer and wine for on-premises consumption.
How's that?
Okay, discussion.
So this is in original container?
Yes.
This is for, not set out, not.
Correct, you know, we just can, it's correct.
Yes.
So we're not dealing with glass, we're not dealing with glasses.
Okay, and it's also a beer bottle. I mean, but you can't do, you can't do a tack, so it's, I mean, it's, no, it's interpretation of beer bottles.
Oh, it's not, yeah, outdoor consumption.
So I guess there's two different issues. I mean, is this, is this vote we're doing right now, is this going to be awarding this license to Spartan Axles, or is this simply to change our current code to allow for this class A2 license?
This would create.
This would create that license.
Right, it's generic. So, I remember about, I don't know, eight months or so ago, um, we had a business come in here, um, what were they called?
The Shaws.
What's that?
The Shaws.
The Shaws, and saying that they wanted a liquor license, do you know if they ever got one?
Um, they applied and everything, but then they had some monetary fixes they had to do out back to the patio, and then just pulled, pulled down on it, so they never really went with it.
Because this license would fit more of what they were trying to do than the one that we have, that I'm applying for, I would imagine.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Well, if we create this license now, in the event that they, or decide to move forward, if it again, it would be established, so. We at least got, you know, this class, so. So, anything else? Catherine? Any, um, sorry, no?
Just create the, it's just to create the license.
Yes, right. You forget. We're sorry.
No question, no question.
Catherine?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Quincy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triver?
Yes.
Okay, item D, if I can have a motion.
Motion to approve an ordinance increasing the number of class A2 liquor licenses for Spartan Axles.
Second.
Discussion.
So it seems like we have a few things going on in here with the, the wall for the garden and the license, so I have no question about the, 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 um, beer and wine containers or that, but what's going on with the fencing around? Interesting.
Sorry, I apologize.
So the, 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 the code would require an eight-foot fence around the entire outdoor patio, that's what the code requires, and what, uh, what is being proposed, would it would, uh, not amend the code, but just allow for the, the eight-foot fence to be along the eastern property line up against that garage and that house.
Where the residences are.
Where, where, correct.
And just a, on the lower fence on the others?
Yes, the, the balance would be a minimum four-foot fence, but it'd be open. There, there's pictures that I believe attached showing what's.
I did scroll hard, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's pictures that are attached showing what's there right now, they, they, they have the retaining wall, and on top of that, they have the open fencing. So I guess the first picture, you can see where the, like, the front of the building is off of Barrington.
Yep.
And if that, the utility pole there, the solid fencing would go along that, uh, other retaining wall near the property, the adjacent property.
Okay.
So Chris, my question is, you know, we require an eight-foot fence, and that's fine, but would the, at what elevation? Because at the patio level, eight feet up won't even clear the, the fence that's there now between, you know, from the, you know, the south half of that garage going back.
Correct, it would be on, it would be on the high part of the, of the ground, above the retaining wall, so it'd be outside the existing, uh, open fence.
Right.
And close it to the property line, so that'd be eight feet from the, from basically from like where the sidewalk is.
Okay, so, um, the only question I have is, is there an easement or right-of-way issue between that small, um, fence that's on the top of the cement wall now and that garage?
Because it's.
Pretty tight, um, pathway, if you, if you will, so what I was wondering is if there's enough room to mount that fence on the cement ledge behind the four-foot eastern edge, eastern side, we could, it could be tied into that metal, secured in other words, and not have to go onto actual ground, but I'm just wondering if there's ever gonna be.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know that.
Utility companies and so forth.
With the, uh, I, I think it would have to go into the ground just because of the, the wind shear possibly, it, it might just, you know, be too much to hold on to that fence that's mounted to the, to the top of that retaining wall, literally.
Well, that's not saying we could secure it to that.
Mount it into the ground.
Do you know if, uh, you know, if, if mortal has rights to that, grasp?
Yeah, his property goes, just go to that retaining wall, the neighbor's property, so he has about, about three and a half, four feet there that are his.
Beyond the retaining.
Beyond the retaining wall. There's, there's a, there's two retaining walls, one on Mole's, and then one on the adjacent property, the, the ground steps up that much.
So the question is just leaving the, remaining side as the open fencing at a shorter height, right, so like, not the, not the back wall, the back wall would be the solid, he's, he's, yeah, he's saying, well, I know, but then the one on, uh, Barrington, and then the one in, who's that, Little Alley, Ford.
Ford.
Those would, it would still be fenced the whole way, it would just be that open.
Correct.
Okay. And not necessarily. Yeah, I like, yeah.
Um, so, you are, uh, Mr. Carter.
Sure, yeah.
My partner.
My, I'm, I'm with you, it's, it's with Father John, my brother and I, we're, I think all three of us are partners in the business, but unfortunately, my brother Angelo, my wife, and me, you know, that's been a family work, you see, for his life, so, made it time to add, but I think with, with my dad here, us, we'd be able to answer the question, yeah, if it were not, so.
So, so here's what my question is.
Sure.
When you guys were here, I don't remember when it was, three, four months ago, to, to get the special inclusion.
Sure.
When you were here, there were some residents here worried about the noise from axes hitting the doors, and, you know, I kind of felt like that's really probably a non-issue once you guys, you know, put up, you know, insulation and stuff like that.
Sure.
But now we're talking about a beer garden.
Right.
With, what, 20, 30 people on it, having a good time.
Sure.
And that's gonna be substantially louder.
I agree, I definitely agree with you.
And so, I guess, I guess my question is, you know, how late are you gonna go?
Okay, and that's, you know, that's the one thing that, um, we're, we're definitely exploring, but we'll obviously be in the price with one of the businesses I'm doing with, I know Kitty Corner for once, obviously DC Cops has a, has a patio.
Sure.
But the major difference between us and other places, we're not a bar that you can go ask to that, we're an outdoor recreation place that you can have a beer at.
Right.
So even though we have some reason to be a crowd, most of our crowd, you know, with only six, seven ways, you know, the majority of the idea of a beer garden isn't necessarily just for random people that aren't gonna participate, um, to come hang out, which we may just go over, we may not, but ultimately, the whole point of maybe is kindness, the same reason why we're having a beer and wine, it's just to enhance the experience for our guests that are with them, and, you know, we have that, we have that issue now where we only have a limited space, especially to where a group may be having to wait to get checked in, so as, as people come in, we have to verify the waivers, and then have to like go on the computer real quick, punch in their phone number, so that takes a little bit of time, so we may have a group of like 10 here, or the group of six here, or the group of seven, and now us also having the patio, kind of helps move the crowd control and how we're gonna handle it. Now, again, the last thing we're trying to do is be inconvenient to any of our neighbors, and again, we're not trying to have casual parties or anything about the plants, uh, we're only gonna serve beer, wine, like I said, it's all gonna be disposable, so we have no problem trying to maintain. So we have no problem trying to maintain, uh, whatever order this is. And as far as like right now, we're looking to close by ten o'clock. And what I mean by that is, we will take our last reservation for anyone throwing ass at nine. So if you don't make the reservation, we should be given a fifteen-minute window. Uh, most of the time, you may come in and just throw asses for thirty minutes. Uh, and, and, uh, if we can push it to, on the weekend, for privacy, private parties to stay open until midnight, we wouldn't allow people to come in at eleven-thirty, or, uh, you know, walk in from a different place or whatnot and want to just throw an ass without having a reservation. So there's certain stuff that we want to go ahead and put in the place. That way it's easier on us, easier on everybody, and again, we're, we're able to have crowd control at that point.
So you, you won't be getting into a situation then where people are coming in with the intention of just purchasing a beer and sitting on your patio. If they have to sign up for throwing first, then they could purchase a beverage.
Well, we don't want to restrict it to that, because, you know, we just, we just had approved the Crystal Lake. Now, obviously, it's a different place, a different colony, or a different area, different rules. But, um, we've had come across where people do come there just to see it first, and, you know, maybe experience how safe it is, have a drink, and then go ahead and make a decision on what they want to do. So I don't want to take that away from anybody, but again, our goal is not to have people just coming in, uh, just to have a beer and sit outside. The goal is, again, is just to, you know, enhance the experience of the guests that are already there. So I don't want to put a restriction on that end, but also, we're not looking to keep a patio open until midnight. You know, that's only gonna be, obviously, we want, we like to shut a patio without a beer. Uh, that's a cost problem for our neighbors, and then again, we shut the bar down, you know, before a certain time limit, we get everybody out by midnight. So we've been in the industry for a combined a hundred years, you know, and, uh, just to give a quick background for people that don't know, my father started off in like nineteen seventy-six. You know, his first place was Sparky Heroes, and that's why we incorporated the name again. You know, I'm forty-four years old, so my brother is forty years old. And legally, I, I say I started in, you know, thirteen, fourteen, or twenty, I started the division at six, you know, so my entire life, I've always been in this. And as far as like how we're gonna control the crowd, we're only gonna allow so many beers per hour. We're gonna go by the other way consumption policy, which I believe is like, one beer every thirty minutes. You know, if you have a massive cart, uh, my brother knows this law, we're gonna train our staff to that point. And again, we're not looking there to have people come in and then bomb those asses. It's like, it's like people bowling with your daughter or your son or whatever. You have a beer, you have two, control the environment, and then we get shot at. So, I don't want to put a restriction and say, hey, yeah, people need to come to the patio. But again, that's just, just another enhancement, uh, for our guests that we don't have. You know, on Saturday, our previous, at our other place, we just did a hundred and forty people, big array of families, and if you look up our, our online reviews, we had a couple of families try to interfere just because of our reviews and how we treat our guests. So that goes above and beyond, and ultimately, we want a safe environment where if we have a group of women that come in there, they're not gonna have some guy that's, you know, let's be honest, you don't want some guys sitting there who're trying to creep and trying to be rude or disrespectful. I worked at the casino, and I bartended from eight till five in the morning. So I've seen enough in my mouth where I can see the craziness of what happens after a certain time. And I have a daughter, so, you know, things have definitely been amplified now that I've been in that position of life. And the last thing I want is to expose my family or my customers to somebody coming in, bomb somewhere else, and I have no control of that. So our main goal again is just to have a nice place that looks beautiful, very priceless without the touches of your going. Uh, I think we're gonna be a great, great addition to the, to the community. And from the feedback that we're getting from other people from East I D that have already traveled to our location, other business owners, that's our bread and butter. You do a lot of corporate events, a lot of private parties, a lot of families, a lot of family reunions. So we're not trying to be, again, a bar that you can go throw at, you know, ass at. We want to be an outdoor recreation place where everyone feels comfortable, and they don't have to feel like intimidated or unsafe, or like, oh, what's happening here, or anything, so.
Thanks for that.
Of course.
Could I mention one thing? The, the special use ordinance that was granted allows the outdoor operation, show to seek the evening final later than eleven P M.
That's a good one. The only reason we brought up the wall is just because we, we didn't ask for like, believe it or not, to invite, you know, like, and that kind of took us off, off guard. And again, uh, I think that would only be due to like a special use, but the last thing we're trying to do is push, push it to late. So, and obviously, that's what we need to do, and we need to start out at that, that point. And then again, earn your trust and see how safe and how controlled and how really hands-on my family really is with it. We're totally okay with that. You know, when we first opened in twenty nineteen, the village of Crystal Lake, uh, there were seven people who did the presentation in front of, they wanted us to have age restriction and so on and so forth. You know, it was, it was quite the, the presentation we had to put up, and we got voted for to three. And now was the last time when we went over there, because that did, again, was clear sweep seven zeros and beer wine. And I think that, that speaks highly because of how good we, we treat our guests and honestly, how safe we can fix. We're the only treat, we're the only gas facility in the whole country that has closed cages. So you don't have to worry about anyone being a little over served, which it ain't gonna happen at my clock. It didn't happen at my father's clock, so it ain't gonna happen at my brother's clock. So with the, with the delayed consumption policy that we were planning to impose, where it's three beers, uh, an hour, or two beers an hour or whatnot, and the way the cages are designed, you don't have to worry about someone next to you making a mistake, throwing the ass when someone else isn't ready. So that way eliminates a lot of human error and possibility of any asses that occur. So I think with all those factors in place, we're simply, we're definitely face a safe, fun environment, yeah.
True.
Of course.
So how long do you have the, um, license increase till like?
We got, we got, actually, we got the license in November. Uh, we started serving this summer, right around the summer. And it already has been quite, quite the help for, you know, not, not also getting some Christmas parties and whatnot, but also a lot of corporate parties and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I meant corporate parties.
Yeah, it's been, it's been quite, quite nice. So together, reviews the last, the last couple of months, we went from a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty on Google to a hundred and sixty, now altogether from Google, uh, Google, Facebook, we have over five hundred reviews. So it's been, it's been pretty awesome, you know, and even like veterans that come in, different women's groups, uh, really go on and on, or different people that we, we bet, you know, how happy they are. Honestly, how empowering it is for a lot of people as well. So it's, it's been, it's been pretty cool to see that, to be a part of that, you know, so. Any questions? We're good.
Anybody else?
Awesome. Well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Uh, we should talk about the staff's recommendations here for this. Right? Eight foot, uh, those. Tall plantings in between the decorative fence and the east side. And yet to use all sound fences. Soon it will stop. It's eight for the day. Fifty persons, occupancy, and second beer. So we have, uh, three staff recommended stipulations. One is, um, plant barriers. And one is fifty people max on the patio. And one is, uh... Oh, so you can't, so we're saying you can't, or they're saying, you can't serve alcohol after you're done throwing ass, is that what we're saying? Or after, or after your last, um, group is done throwing ass?
So in other words, you won't be allowed to be open just serving alcohol and not the ass throwing act?
And nobody's gonna open this?
Right, right, exactly. Like, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna, our last reservation would be, let's say, we, we, we close at eleven, right? Our last reservation would be at ten o'clock. So I mean, if someone finishes off and they decide to stay, they can, we still do last call at ten thirty. By eleven o'clock, the place is cleared out. We're not gonna do last call and serve until. And then, and if you already have your mats that, that we're gonna allow someone to serve, um, and that's kind of how we're handling it, that way it's a lot smoother operation on our end. Uh, when we just kind of say, hey, just let you know, if someone does come up too fast after the first beer, uh, we let them know immediately, like, hey, you only can get, you only can serve me three beers in an hour and a half that you have committed to play. So we're not, you know, and again, honestly, we haven't really come across that. Most of the people, one up are the, the age group that comes into the ass place, believe it or not. I mean, it's, um, forty-five to sixty-five, you know, that's, that's really our core group of people. And so we really don't have young kids coming in. Um, and again, another thing, what we're trying to eliminate is someone walking into the place just for having a drink at eleven o'clock. You know, we're, we're determining if we're just gonna cut that off, because at eleven o'clock, we don't want anyone else walking in, having a drink, and it's, it's a lot more, a lot more difficult to determine someone's intoxication level by just having a couple of words with them. Especially someone that's, you know, a drinker, because they're able to mask that better. But if I get the, the opportunity to speak to you for a couple of minutes and you're about to throw asses, I can at least come up to the, to the, you know, assumption in my head of whether I believe you being served or not. So if you can't get served, you can't throw asses. You know, that's something we've already had implemented before. If we think you're already at another level, some type of drug or whatnot, you know, we're not gonna permit you to, to go throw ass. But we never came across that either, you know, in all the people that we serve. So I believe, you know, the, the one thing that we do obviously have to worry something about is we're joining an area that, you know, after a certain time, it, it does get, you know, certain, that, that, it does get busy. And we, and we totally understand that. And that's why we're trying not to stay open to, to blame and honor, because we don't want to be a burden to anybody else or have to worry about someone else's guests that had an issue at a bar, or whatever it may be, and that we don't have that information. So we're trying not to, we're trying to limit the people that just walk in off the street. You know, it's very, we already have that out now, like on Friday and Saturday, we're usually already committed, fully committed, three, four days out. And those are done all online or by phone call. So the type of customers that are willing to go ahead and put that effort and make the reservation online, call us, and then do the waiver, they're really not, you know, they're not a troublesome group, so. I think that by us preventing certain things about allowing walk-ins and how we're gonna do that, I think that's gonna be a good, a good, not a problem.
But as long as we know that there will be no serving or consumption of alcohol once the ass activity ceases.
Yes, right. Yeah, and we won't have like, you know, like a vague plan for a later night or nothing like that. You know, everything's all about the asses first and foremost, and about, that's our core business. You know, this is just gonna be like, yeah, just another, uh, added, an added thing to that.
So, Chris, um, two things. One, you know, if you, if they're gonna put an eight-foot fence on the wall now, so there's the metal fence, and then there's an eight-foot fence, and then we're saying some sort of landscape offer as well. What, what's the goal there? Is that, is that got some sound dead meat properties if you put up vent bushes or something?
It, it can help, and it would be, if, if there's enough room, like three feet between the existing fence and the solid fence, to do some sort of landscaping, soften it a little bit, even the look of it, it was solid fence and then having some herbivores or something spread out throughout there, just a few, half a dozen or something. Just a, just a softener.
Well, I mean, if we, if we say that, and then he doesn't do it, and then we're getting the homeowner in trouble because they can't get behind their garage or something, uh, because we filled up the entire area, that's something I guess I would worry about.
Chris's garage on his property, though?
His garage must be right on his property, is what we're saying, right?
I don't know exactly where his garage is, I know there's, I know the, the building line ran just above to that fence, so I'm not sure if the fence is a little, the, the existing fence. I have to get, I have to get the survey out, I don't have that looking. So if you felt that, if you felt that it'd be too crowded to have the, you know, the landscaping there, we could move that fence off, you know, closer to the, closer to the retaining wall.
So I mean, there's already three feet or so of, of a retaining wall from that patio floor. So you wouldn't need something real tall there probably to, to add some buffering to it, you know? Some, some, some three-foot evergreen shrubs or something, you know, probably, get you six feet off the ground of the patio.
Uh, and then the fifty people, seems like a lot of people. I would imagine you would even say that's a lot of people.
It seems like a lot of people. I mean, and like, really, the most we put in the lady is, well, about four people in the lady.
And at least at least, yeah, we all go out, because he's about forty-eight, right?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't believe that, you know, we said that, I believe, you know, I, we didn't answer that. But ultimately, that, well, the landlord may not, maybe, maybe he doesn't believe in our, in our formula. He wants to have that, like, he wants to have a bigger party out there. But ultimately, you know, that's the last thing we're trying to do is have a packed patio outside. And one more thing, is to reassure you guys, we're not gonna have asses for guests that just walk through the patio. You know, we're still gonna make sure that-
You go through the building.
Yeah, through the building first, you know, that we, we see who's coming in, and we check everybody, and so on and so forth. So we're all about proper control, you know, not, like, that's military, we do not surround that, so. That's the last thing we want.
Well, since this is a new liquor license, like, the back fifty, I mean, was just to establish?
No, that, that was just fixing the square footage. We, the square footage looked like old, but if you wanna set a different one, that's completely acceptable.
We want to be, like, pet-friendly possibly, you know, where we follow people, you know, and like, we want to make it where it's comfortable, not try to squeeze as much people in to fight for the beer. You know, so we're not gonna, we're not, we haven't even discussed about putting up, you know, like, pop, nothing type of like stand outside. People would still have to come to the garage that we're gonna have open to get service. You know, we haven't talked about having top some servers, which we're still, we're still in the process of trying to figure out exactly how we're gonna plan that stuff out. But again, the most important thing, like I said, I don't need to overrecognize it. I mean, we say it first and foremost, when people walk in the doors, our safety, we haven't had one issue, not on wood. And again, you know, now that we have beer wine, we're even more strict about our, our rules. So, uh, we want to bring that same type of methodology, you know, into what we're bringing here at, at East I D. And even with our staff, we're already planning on who we're gonna hire, um, the experience level they're gonna have, and also giving them trade ahead of time, that way we do open up against the ground running, and they understand about the consumption policy, so on and so forth.
So, just so we do this correctly, who made the motion?
Um, I did. Yeah, um, I just have one other question.
Yeah.
Um, Chris, is, is the homeowner that's adjacent to the property, that's gonna be the most affected? Are they aware of what's going on and the, the eight-foot fence that we're asking?
They are, huh?
I think it's important to try and reach out to them as a village, or, or, you know, ask them to do that just so they have an understanding and that you have an understanding of how they can access if they need to the, the backside of the garage for whatever reason. So that it's not a big surprise.
And suddenly they can't paint that side of the garage? There's a gap. There's a gap, and they were saying that the fence might go in the middle of that gap.
So there's a, there's a lot of- But it's hard to talk about the issue.
Yeah, I thought it was only three feet. I thought it was only three feet between the, between the wall and the garage. It was like four feet. So, but like, you put a fence in between, I just don't know, like, you've got to, like, you can't get a ladder and put.
Uh, okay. So I'll just throw this out there, uh, should we table this until after we talk to that resident and get there?
I don't think it's a matter of getting permission, I think they just need to-
Well, once we pass this-
No, nothing's been happening there.
Okay, but once we pass this, they will be out on the internet and they put facts.
That's right.
So, I mean-
I think we're confusing how the fence will sit. The fence is not gonna obstruct access to the garage.
Look at all the space. There's a lot of space.
The fence isn't gonna go past the building, it's just gonna go up the building.
Okay, so that retaining wall is probably there.
Yeah, that's, that's their retaining, so they're supposed, they're supposed to. I thought, I thought that I heard from the result, three feet, and we're doing the-
Full of G I S?
Fence in between the existing fence and the garage.
I think it's three feet from, from, uh, their retaining wall to the resident's retaining wall.
Yeah.
Oh, got it.
For that?
I see it.
So, yeah.
You could go with three fifteen, or three fifteen.
Yeah, you're a true one. I think they're, you know, all rolling, gonna get paid eventually.
Okay, so if we're gonna do this correctly, does, does Kathleen need to manage her, uh, motion?
No, you could, you could just make a little motion with the conditions. You could be like Scott since you're tracking it. We're, we're only, it's a small group, this isn't Congress, we don't get that technical.
All right, well, I need to-
I don't find it for that.
All right, so this is what, this is, I guess, motion I need to make, I think. Agree or disagree? I will, uh, move to approve, uh, sorry. Move to approve an ordinance increasing the number of Class A2 liquor licenses for Spartan Axe Throwing and stipulate that a, uh, eight-foot fence would only go on the east side. Uh, that the limit of people on the patio would be twenty-five. Uh, that the, uh-
Twenty-five?
They have staff and twenty-fourth property on the side, so I can go on. That means a lot of people.
We cut it in half now. You know, sometimes we have-
So they're thirty-five.
Also, they're like forty.
So we'll, we'll say a nice amount of people is forty. Uh, and What's that?
Before we look at, maybe, if we could maybe have some latitude on the landscaping, because if we need to move that fence over a little bit, closer to the existing fence?
Yeah, I'd rather not make the landscaping harder for required culture.
Right, maybe we can do the, if, if we can make the landscaping fit, then we can ask them to do that. But maybe leave the landscaping out for now.
I'm on landscaping tomorrow.
Okay. Erica, if we, if we grant this uh license, does it come off the review of the year, or is it just some sort of we will not be able to talk about it, we can't have it?
So once a license is granted, it's granted, and they have the ability to go forward with all the conditions set there within, but any waived conditions that were, that are a part of the original requirement could still be reinstated at any point in time, not ruled by the legal commissioner, if there, if we, if we see that there's a need to re- institute them.
Who was on the
That's the village program.
Uh, there's two other. Condition. There's three. All right, okay.
It's on the east side.
So a fence on the east, so stipulations on a fence on the east side and a forty person maximum on the patio. That's the motion.
There you go.
So, anybody? Good.
Trust Mahoney?
Yes.
Trust Quincy?
Yes.
Trust Burton? Yes. Trust Saviano?
Yeah.
And trust Char.
Okay, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah, one more for the gaming, so uh, we can have more for Friday evening.
So is this a just motion to discuss? This is a, um, for the
Uh, motion to discuss, and then it's amended the number of video game permits. So uh, are we going to also approve the, approve the ordinance, or are we just gonna talk about?
Motion to discuss, and then decide to approve, or motion to approve?
We could, we could approve it if we want. Okay.
I made a motion to discuss an ordinance, and maybe the number of video game permits for Sparkax, so.
All neighbor? So you have six lanes?
Yes.
And this is for six? And also, and over lane?
My apologies, I guess the original, the original construction plans were for southern.
Okay.
We're discussing if we're, you know, we're eliminating it or not, just for
Okay.
Extra space inside, because the, the place is kind of tight.
Okay, with the tight space, is there tell me what your reasoning is for the, for one video game?
Well, the reason why, the reason why, I'm sorry to interrupt, the reason why the space is tight is because the, the space is limited on where we're putting um, the ass in the lanes, because we're trying to make the other area where the bar and the gaming and the check-in area a little bigger um, than we normally had. So that's why, 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 what I'm gonna say, I want to be clear on that. Um, we actually have ample on space on the other side of the building, on the west side of the building. Uh, so the, the, yeah, so the lanes will be on the east side, right where the rest, where the restaurants are, so from that side, it's a little tighter for the settings. Uh, but where we're having everything like as a check-in, uh, where people could go ahead and sit and whatnot, we come we, we're trying to address a problem that we're having in our other location by not trying to have the same problem at this location. Where we get backed up, where people all come in, because our reservation is the way they work, like, we may have, you know, ten lanes all committed at six o'clock. So now you have fifty people showing up once, and it gets crazy. So inevitably, we have a better way of doing crowd control, uh, we're able to bring people in, get them checked in, have them go off to the side, and then we have a little better area, viewing area as well, on how to control lanes. Instead of the way we have it now, where it's very tight when people first walk in, so we're trying to minimize that.
I guess I'm just concerned with the video game permit, with some of the conversations we've been having where, you know, apps are its priority, this is, you know, with what we were sort of just talking about with the liquor license. We have so many, so much video games in this town, and I guess I'm worried that it's going to end up feeling more like a bar to go for our asses.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you, I don't know if you've ever been to an actual place, but I mean, as soon as you walk in, the first thing you see are the seven, you know, six lanes, you're closing cages. And our, our, our design, our actual layout is so much more like in-depth and so much bigger than anyone else's. Like, we have cages all the way around you, uh, and just the way we're gonna be doing service, we're not gonna be able to come in there and drink a shot of beer, um, and, and, you know, sit there and just get, you know, with what we're trying to have in place or whatnot. Our main, main goal, again, is for the ass, that's our bread and butter. Now, again, the reason why we're even going to try to get into the gaming is because of those are comments that we constantly get made. We have a lot of families that come in, and for instance, like, we have elderly, elderly, um, you know, families that come, or guests that come in. They don't really necessarily play, they just kind of observe. And while they're observing, you know, they're asking, hey, you have a Snickers, you can grab that and put it a little money in the machine, and first it was a joke, and then it seemed like it got bought up again and again and again and again. So we're actually in the process of applying as well for Crystal Lake. You know, and again, it's just like an added, an added, you know, one, it helps us, obviously. Uh, but again, we're putting it in a space that I think is gonna actually look very nice, and also not really take up any distraction from any of our players. Uh, it'll almost be just like, again, adding, as an added enhancement for our guests that we already have. And again, you know, we're not looking to have people come in, we're still enforcing the same rules. Like, we're not gonna have people just walking in at eleven thirty to go put a twenty in the machine. You know, we're gonna have that only for our guests that are already there. You know, it's ultimately up to them whether they, you know, want to play or not, you know, so.
I guess I'm just hesitant on it right this second. You know, before, before open, before all of that. I know, I understand that you've been hearing it in other facilities, I just I, I haven't, dude, you just don't, like, I, I feel like, you know, it wasn't a restaurant in this town, like, I have video games.
Sure, and again, I think the gas station's heavy, I mean, I went out to get a, and I paid fifty-four dollars for a plate of food, and they have a corporate machine there. You know, and again, it's just like, with us being a recreation center, you know, and the, the fact of like, it just seems, it just, we've got more and more, again, and, you know I, I definitely, I, I definitely agree what you're saying, I think it has been an overkill. Uh, people are all trying to get their, you know, get what they can out of it. Uh, and honestly, as a struggling, you know, we're not saying that we're struggling, but we survive hoping. You know, we didn't get any government handouts, you know, we're not, we're not that type of, if we could have, we weren't even gonna try, I'm sure they would have, because I've heard stories of so many places that didn't have to pay anything back, but, you know, now that we're trying to do things in a, in a proper way, and make sure that we're handling everything and doing all our business the right way, the fact that it's, it's an opportunity to help enhance that, enhance for our guests, and also enhance our business. Um, in case, God, God forbid, something does happen, and that, it's not like we're asking for something that other people don't have. Um, again, so we're not trying to go across any barriers or sever any tolls, uh, when it's like, we'll find out if we supply for it, since it's, it's a, over twice the amount uh, you know, of our guests, even with the beer wine, but first, we didn't apply for it, not that we didn't believe that we could get it. Uh, you know, when we first opened up, but it's just a matter of, you know, people kept asking. People were saying, we didn't even want to, we weren't sure if we, we were wanting to go into there. Uh, because at the time, again, there were only two places, it was a whole state. Uh, so we, you know, we just sold our family's restaurant at that moment, so there was a little, you know, we were a little torn out what we were gonna do. Uh, but now, when we see that the recreation place, you know, our one location's in, in an industry area, industrial area. This area is a little more recreational, where more people are walking around and so on and so forth, and it kind of just seems that we're fairly good.
And, and I think that's probably a really good point of comparison to your current location in Crystal Lake is in an industrial park, so there aren't the bars literally
Walking distance.
Walk across the street that they could go to if somebody wants to game, you know? You know, that it's at DC Cubs and at
Sure.
And at Blackberry, um, as well as a bunch of other establishments around here, so, um
You know, and I don't want to lose the casual person that, unfortunately, that's either going out with your, your mom or whatever that wants to game and knows places that, hey, I know this place gave, now go there. And again, it's like, we do have a lot of guests, like, when we want to be wheelchair accessible, obviously, we want to take everybody, a veteran coming the other day. And the first thing he said, threw the ass three, four times in a chair and got tired, because I don't love to put, you know, sit here and watch them while I play a little, you know, play and cheat. So again, you know, I mean, that's kind of how the idea, you know, was, was kind of presented to us, so.
Hi, there's a gentleman, I mean, to cater to the, the noise complaint possibility that we were discussing a little bit earlier, all of those, it's all people keeping